To order now. The first item is a consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review that?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, any further discussions or updates needed on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Right, so it's approved. Just did see a message come in. Okay. I don't know how we do a sign in. For people who might want to speak, I don't know if there's anybody who wants to speak.
I just saw a chat message come up, JR and Kim both want to speak during visitors comments and Stephanie saying the same thing.
Okay. So if you want to call them in, because I can't for some reason, I'm seeing chats, but I'm not. Maybe it's something I'm doing wrong, but if you just want to call the visitors in, that would be great.
Okay, Stephanie?
Yep.
Go ahead.
All right, it's gonna be one second, I tried to kind of write this out. So I really was just wanting to talk about the virtual learning. I got the update last Friday. I just wanted to express that, you know, East Meadow has awesome technology. And I'm just unsure why we're not using it more. I emailed administration asking the same thing. And I was under the impression that Desi stated new material could only be introduced by teacher video conferencing or pre-recorded lessons. And since we're not doing that, I'm just wondering if we are continuing to just do maintenance for grades K through six from March to the end of the school year. My kindergartner has weekly Zoom meetings, voice calls and messages with her teacher. While my third grader has barely spoken to two of her, out of her three teachers. One of her teachers told me that they were told at a staff meeting last week that kindergarten was given the okay due to their parents being the ones logging them in and out and safety concerns. Like I said, I reached out asking what that was about. And Mr. Latoy had said that they are monitoring sites. And if one opens that is safe and secure for students in elementary, they'll pass that along. To be honest, I wasn't sure what that meant, because many other districts nearby elementary levels are utilizing voice virtual learning in videos. I spoke to some teachers. Ludlow, for example, has first, a first grade teacher, they're doing daily Zoom for half an hour. Sixth grade's doing two a day. Belcher Town grades three, four, five, Google meets twice a week for an hour. Westfield's doing second grade, one to two Google hangouts per week. Chicopee, fourth grade is doing daily Google meets for an hour. South Hadley's doing pre-recorded lessons and weekly Google meets. I mean, the list is just so on. I'm just wondering why we are not doing that yet, six weeks in. And if we're going to continue to not do that, was my impression from Mr. Latoy. I'm a little concerned about that. So that was my big question. I think that was it.
Okay. So Mike, do you want me to just call the next one? Or do you, do you want any discussion?
I think, I think, to be honest with you, I think we can. I don't, I don't know if Cheryl wants to try to answer that now, or, or what, I know.
Well, I'd just like to remind everyone that public comment isn't a discussion. It is for people to share their thoughts and concerns. We will be addressing some of the upcoming changes during the remote learning section. And I will get into a little bit of the detail there. I won't get into all of what Stephanie was discussing. Certainly. We'll get into a good, a good part of it.
Okay. All right, JR? You guys are on mute. Sorry.
Yeah, can you unmute me, please? Hi, good evening. I hope everybody's doing okay and everybody's healthy, family. I just had, I missed the last meeting and I just had a, just two questions. One, you know, especially now that the school year is over this year. You know, in this pilot program, I wasn't really aware of this. Like I said, I missed the meeting a couple of weeks ago. And the first question I guess I have is, you know, is this pilot program done anywhere else in the state that has any feedback on this program? Is it approved by Desi? And is it approved by the state to split up a sixth grade like this? To, you know, put one in a high school and one in, you know, a different East Meadow? And I guess lastly, you know, seeing as that, you know, this year has been obviously considerably shorter now because of, you know, this pandemic. You know, we're really now moving fifth graders into a high school. You know, I mean, without the sixth grade, you know, completing, you know, I, I think kids are really young now, even more than before, without, you know, going through an entire, you know, fifth grade learning, structured learning in school. So I just, like I said, I, those were just kind of my two questions about, you know, has this been done before? And is it approved to be done? You know, I mean, doesn't Desi have the ultimate say on whether you can do this or not? And, you know, your thoughts on, I guess, you know, them being really young and missing out this last, you know, however long five months of school to mature, you know, because of what's going on. Thanks.
Okay, Kim?
I wasn't talking, I was just writing that JR wanted to talk.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood your chat.
No worries, it's fine.
I just feel I, I know we don't normally do this, but we don't have a traditional sign in. So I just want to give a minute if there's somebody else that wants to speak, kind of speak now or forever hold your peace kind of thing. I know that people were having trouble last time and I heard from people that they felt like they didn't get a chance. And I'm on an iPad this time, so I don't know where to go and see the chat thread. But I'm seeing them as they pop up. So I think we're probably, probably good. So kind of going once, going twice. Is everyone cool if we move on to the next item on the agenda then? All right.
Right, so thank you Jen.
Mike, you're up.
Yeah, so thank you. And I, I, and that's the reason I had asked you to do it, because I was kind of afraid to touch anything and then. The next item is Marcus, and I see Marcus is available tonight. And he's with us.
First time we probably got invited.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Marcus, it's all yours.
Well, hello. I'm just here to stop by and see how everyone's doing, since I haven't been here for a couple of times. Everyone doing all right?
Yep.
How do you?
I'm good, how are you?
I don't know, I was wondering how you were feeling. I know how Eva's doing after this, after today's announcement.
I'm fine, I was expecting.
That was a really, really high, high powered, high enthusiasm, fine, I'm fine.
I'm fine.
So, yeah, so, so you really can't meet with the rest of the student groups, can you? It's kind of, it's kind of hard for you to, to give us a lot of updates at this point.
Yeah. You know, I keep in contact with the people I'm closest with, but that's about it.
Will you guys be able to meet? Student council?
There's been a couple of communications on our Google classroom for our grade and for student council, but not too much.
It would be interesting, actually, not only for, you know, from a technology perspective, to see how it is working for you guys. But, you know, in times like this, probably what you're thinking and what you're feeling will be a lot more important to share. If we can create that opportunity, it would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree, especially with regards to, you know, like the, I like the classes themselves. And what you're learning, is it, you know, is it? Is it enough? Is it too much? I mean, some of these things we hear, you know, we, we do hear from different people, but it's nice to get that other perspective, too.
Okay. Yeah, I could reach out to our student council to see if people would like, want to put together a survey of some sort, or just reach out to their individual classes, because I know that the seniors and the freshmen have like their own, and the sophomores all have their own different individual classrooms that they could probably reach out on and get some opinions.
Okay, that would be great. And we'll, we'll get you at the next meeting, too.
Yes. I don't see why, I don't have anywhere to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Is there anything else for Marcus?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to the new business, the digital literacy grant.
Yep, so we were awarded the digital literacy grant for middle school grades six through eight. It's fund code 152. The amount is for $10,390. The goal is to establish and promote rigorous, engaging and, and standards-aligned digital literacy and computer science education in public schools. The expectation is that we participate in a facilitated process to develop digital literacy and computer science implementation plan for the district. And that we select a digital literacy and computer science curriculum for the school year 2021. That we complete educator and coach curriculum professional development for delivery in the school year 2021. It includes three to four contact days in the summer for professional development. And with the changes, that's going to be a little challenging. So we'll have to, we're in contact right now with the Desi to figure out how that's going to go. Right now, we are slated to have six teachers participate. And that's the majority of the funding for professional development and curriculum development. But there is also funding for supplies for implementation. So I did want to celebrate that with the committee. And I also wanted to give credit to Beth Craven, who worked on Granby being able to participate in that grant opportunity. And that's all for that.
Thank you Cheryl, that's great news.
Is there, is there any way you can, and I don't know if I've done this already, but you get that up on? So can you put that up on the webpage? Is there, is there like, like you can put a little snapshot of a success?
Yep.
And a little bit of what it means, what we have to do with it?
Yeah, it's good news, right? And all of this other news.
Yep. All right, was there anything else for Cheryl on this? Okay, we'll move on to the bid results for, for the bussing.
Yep, so I, I put the bid results in the folder last week. The bid was opened on April 15th. We had a little few technical difficulties trying to do that over Zoom. So what ended up happening is Andy Pocat, who's currently working in Ware, opened them, sent out the recording of opening the bids and sent us all the information. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a little insight on as to how that went down. There was only two proposals. One from McCarthy Transportation and one from First Student. And First Student came in as the lowest of the two bids. So I would just like to recommend First Student for their transportation services starting in July, the fiscal year 21, July 1st of 2020.
Now, does that require a vote? I'm a little unsure how this works, especially with the three towns.
Yeah, so, so I reached out to Mark and Andy. I haven't heard back from them yet. I would say, I'm not sure, I don't know. I would say to be safe, we would vote them. And then I will bring that recommendation to Andy and also Mark Chapulis. And then we'll, we'll have one common either response to First Student or however that goes. But I would say let's vote on First Student and then I will bring that to Andy and Mark.
So, so the agenda doesn't specify there's a vote. Does that, does that mean we can't vote tonight? Or, or? Or not, I guess is my question.
I'm, I'm not sure. I know we have in the past been specific on things that needed votes or not, but I'm, I'm not sure. Cheryl, I'm not sure if you know that.
I think you could vote, given they need that information to move forward with the process.
I just, I just want to make sure we were, we were all set, that's all.
Yep.
All right, so can I get a motion?
And Mike, it may also need your signature when, when everything is done.
Yeah.
Well, well, that's what I thought. And then, you know, I thought we had to vote because it was, it was something that, a signature, but.
Yep.
Okay. Cool. So can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it. Jim, you're on there.
All right, so all those in favor?
All right. No, I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Emery, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Adam, thank you for, for doing this. Can you just help us understand the differences between the last bid that we had, which is our current figures basically, and this one?
So total, at first I should point out on First Student, I'm not sure if you guys did have a chance to look at it. There was a, I don't want to call it a mistake, but they, the total amount of their contract at the bottom did not add up to the actual totals of parts one, two, and three. But that's a minor, that's a minor change, so that's okay as far as bid specs go, we can just let them know that. It's, it's assumed, we just do the math on our own and update the, the documents. So if anybody caught that, I had caught that when Andy sent them to me. I mean, I'm aware there's nothing that we needed to do to change anything. So, so that's one thing. Um. Emery, your question again, sorry, just, just the difference of the cost for this year compared to.
The previous bid?
Yep.
And I was going to ask the same question, but hopefully, you know, we may be able to amend and maybe mention the numbers as opposed to voting on something that may be reflecting the wrong numbers.
Ah, yeah, that, that would be, that would certainly be up to you guys if you want to, if you want to vote it that way. That would be, I guess, up for your guys' discussion.
Yeah, I would suggest that we vote for the, for the correct numbers as opposed to just a document.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure. I made corrections on my end, just give me one second. I'm not sure if I, if I put the corrected version into the folder. No, I did not put the corrected version in. So I can give you, if everyone is looking at the First Student cost breakout.
Yep.
You'll see at the bottom where it says total annual contract cost. It says $95,225. What they did was just add up the part three of that when it should be the total. So what I'll do right now is let me just get that.
Based on, based on the letters that they put in there, it, it is correct, but it's not for the total year in time.
Yes, yes, yep, yep. So the total amount, and I'm not sure if anyone also added up to, to double check me, but the total amount would be $641,060.20. So what that includes, again, if you're looking at it, is the cost for regular transportation, the cost for late buses, and the cost for athletic buses, field trips, and summer trips. So all of that would total 641,6020. Not sure again, if anybody did the math, I'll do it again just to make sure.
I did the math quickly. Does it look different? But I didn't.
So as Mike is doing that, do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, it looks like the assumptions for, and, and, you know, I understand that, you know, these are probably pretty boilerplate and they're applying some of the assumptions to everyone. But for Belcher Town and Granby, you know, it looks like the same athletic assumptions are applied. Was there a reason for that? Was that part of what we agreed to as we were going into this collective bid? Or was it something that they gave to us?
So, so you're saying that the numbers for, no, he's just so I understand that the numbers for athletics or field trips for us is the same number as Belcher Town?
The, the unit, unit cost, yes, the, you know, yeah.
So what I'm, I, I'm going to assume, it's a pretty good assumption, but when we get, when they calculate the mileage for athletic trips, it's from their Belcher Town garage. So I'm assuming, and, and I'm assuming that we play, and if Ally's on here, she can jump in. We play all the same teams that have a similar schedule. So the mileage from Belcher Town to whatever, whoever sports they're playing is essentially the same for, for us because of the way they calculate at least the mileage for athletic trips. Because it's done from, from, like I said, their Belcher Town garage. So how they do it for athletics is the mileage from the Belcher Town garage to Granby, to where we're going, back to Granby, back to the Belcher Town garage. Is how they calculate mileage for athletic trips.
Okay.
So it would make sense that those numbers would be relatively, you know, the same. But I will, I can look into that for you.
Okay.
Adam, another question, is it, is 100 trips, is that like a minimum or something? Is that the, that's what's expected? How do they know it's going to be 100 trips?
I would say between sports and field trips, it's, it's, it would be about 100, 100 trips. Again, I can look to see if that's specific in the contract or in the bid specs.
Is that like the minimum? Is that, you know?
Yep.
Just curious, I didn't look at, do they do the same thing for Belcher Town where?
Well, would that number of 100 trips be what our, our norm is? Is that where, I mean, it's not like they just pulled it out of, is that what you're saying, Adam? Is you'd look and see if it was in the past?
Yeah, yeah, I'm assuming it's, it's, it's just a standard. It's a standard amount of trips between athletics, field trips and summer trips. But I will get that and I'll send it to you guys in an email.
Well, because Ware had 140 trips.
Yeah, so again, it's, it's, it's based on information that's, that's given to them. And again, I will get the details of that and forward it along to you guys.
Okay.
And it's a round trip, not a one-way trip?
Round, round trips, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Emery, you had another question?
Yeah, the, the, do they make the assumption also? Well, these are typically based on assumptions, that's why I was asking. If there was an agreement that the assumptions were fine, that's exactly what they do. Because it's difficult sometimes to say, tell me how many games you're going to go to, how many field trips you're going to go to before they are even scheduled? And then, you know, come to those numbers. So there's, you know, some give and take, that's, you know, that's understood, I guess. But I'm just trying to understand the assumptions and whether or not, whether or not these are things that we agreed to as we were getting into that collective bid. Per trip, there is a average driver waiting time of three hours. Is that what it was? It's not explicit here, but if you take 300 and divide it by 100, so that's three hour waiting for drivers. Is that, was that the underlying assumption?
Yeah, so there is waiting time in there. And that's, yeah, that's a, again, if you're, if you're going to, I'm going to use a baseball game for an example. I would say probably a seven to nine inning games. I'm not sure what they play now, is probably between two, two and a half, three hours of the bus driver sitting there, yeah.
Yep. I guess the main old assumption. The, you know, the, the first question that I was asking about, looks like this is higher than what we had in our previous contract.
Yes, it is. And the, the per diem rate, let me just make sure I'm looking at the right. Yep, so the cost per bus per day went up to, you can see on this one, it's 4, 420. I believe the, the last contract was 368 a day. And I can also get those figures for you guys. And again, I'll do a full, I don't want to say a full analysis, but comparison on this. Once we, we know that it's, obviously it's, it's First Student. But I, I know there that that rate certainly went up from last year quite a bit.
Yeah, so last year. Okay.
So you have last year in front of you, I, I want to say off the top of my head, Emery, just from looking at it over the last few weeks, it's, it's $368 cost per bus per day for regular transportation.
Yeah, that I don't remember.
Okay.
But what I'm, what I'm looking at, and maybe I'm just making the wrong assumption here. I'm looking at your presentation for FY '21. I have the impression that you had used the existing, existing budget for transportation in that version. Is that correct?
So I built in a percent increase in that, in that projection, just knowing we were kind of in limbo with finishing out the current contract and going into the next contract.
Okay.
And I believe I used a 5% increase on, on that number.
So we have, we have 500,000 for regular and about 50, a little more than 50,000 for athletic, which is still short. Is that an issue for our budget perspective or was it?
Well, it's, it's a, that's a separate town article, so it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. It doesn't essentially affect us. That's a separate town article and that money comes from the town.
Well, it affects the total number that you are showing on that, on the presentation. So yes, it is a separate article, but doesn't mean that it's not, yeah.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. Yes, it would have effects on those numbers, but, but it doesn't, it, whatever, whatever way the transportation number fluctuates, it doesn't have any impact on our actual budget, but on the numbers in that presentation, it will, yes.
Yeah, I guess, let me ask it a different way. Since you just mentioned that you had worked in a 5% increase. The fact that the regular transportation now is about $29,000 more than that. And the athletic is about $15,000 more than that. Is it really, you know, is that, is that within the ballpark, even beyond the 5% increase that you had incorporated in your budget?
Let me, I can get.
So it's 30 plus, it's $45,000 difference between what we have in the budget and what, what's showing here. Not that, you know, I guess a bid is a bid, that's, that's understood. But I'm just trying to understand their side of it, whether there was any explanation why the increase was somewhat substantial.
So there's not, and I'll, and I'll, I'll kind of give you a, kind of what we've been dealing with throughout this, the whole current situation that we're in for this year is it's been difficult to get the cost breakdown from First Student as to what, you know, each of their rental facilities, fuel, driver pay, all of those costs broken out. It's been difficult to get them for the current year. We don't ask for it broken out that way in, when we put the bid specs out there. We're still awaiting some of that information from First Student for the current fiscal year. And I can back into some of those numbers for the new contract, once, once we get them. But it is, it's been difficult, to say the least, to obtain some of that information from them. We don't ask for it in such a granular way in the, in the bid proposal. Like, we don't ask for, how does that $420 per day rate, how do you come up with that? Fuel's in there, driver cost is in there, a bunch of things are in there. We don't ask for that type of information.
Yeah, thank you for that. Let me just put, put it a little differently and I'm just going to pass on that one. So the fact that you already had worked in a reasonable increase into your budget and that these numbers are different, in a, it make me question whether or not the current situation that we're in had any impact on these numbers. In other words, that if they are not sure that they're going to be covered for a certain cost and current circumstances, because they're not really functioning, because there, you know, there's a transportation. Was it potentially worked into these numbers in the upcoming contract? Maybe a cynical view, but I just wanted to really throw it out there because the increase of the difference is fairly, fairly substantial compared to what we had seen last time.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And actually, we've, between myself, Mark and Andy have actually talked about that. Like, we're kind of, they kind of, you know, they may have some leverage in the current situation because we had the bid out, we were in this current circumstance. And, and like you said, they may put some, they may inflate some of those costs to kind of cover them if something like this ever happened again. We don't know those answers. I don't think we're at the point to ask those questions yet. But it's certainly something that we figured played in such an increase into the, the cost of, per day of buses.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So, um, I think you wanted to vote based on the actual total number, correct? You wanted to amend the vote so it reflected the actual number?
That is correct.
And I agree with that when I, when I did my own calculation. So what he's got written on that separate sheet is, is the same number I got.
The 641, 06020?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
The one thing I wanted to ask, part three. Does anybody do a true-up to that at the end of the year?
Yeah, so again, yeah, we will certainly do a true-up at the end of the year. Because again, you know, if athletic games get canceled or, you know, certainly to part three, there is, there is some, there are certain, some reconciliation that goes on through, you know, for. To part three, there is, there is some um, there are certain, some reconciliation that goes on through, you know, for, for all of, for all parts of this.
Yeah, I just, I just figured that if, if we had a hundred and five games, I bet that they would be at us for those, those five extra games that. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we had the ability to do the same on our end.
Adam, what's I missed? What happens in years two and three of the contract?
So they, so it's essentially the three-year contract is for the um, same amount um. Each year, the only, the only thing that changes the amount of the contract is the fuel escalator that's in there. And it could be a credit back to us, or it could be us owing first student um, more money, and there's a whole breakout. Um, on how they um, calculate that. Um, so that would be the only fluctuation in cost throughout the three years.
Thank you.
Alright, any further questions? Comments?
Uh, just real quick, so just to, just to be clear, so this year's or this current fiscal year, so this school year that we're. In right now, the cost per bus per day was three hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Compared to four twenty and change in the current proposal.
It's pretty. Yeah, and we, we, I'm honestly, on top of that, we don't know. What at least the upcoming semester will look like. Um, we don't know what the oil prices will look, will look like. A- and, you know, even the extra, you know, cushion that they've put there may become even more, more substantial, more dramatic if. You know. Uh, fuel prices don't, don't go back up. Uh, whatever estimates they have don't hold, but you know. I guess this is, this is, this is the thing about our collective bid. Um, you know, we, there are assumptions and we agree and understand. And, you know, based on that, these are the numbers. Do we know whether the other districts voted on this yet?
Uh, we don't, I believe we're, they're all, they're all, the other two have uh. I believe us and Belcher Town are on the same uh, schedule for school committees. I don't know about where, so if it's not um. If it's not tonight, like we are, it'd be next week and then, um, but I'll follow up with Mark and. Um, Andy, again, we're still talking at the state level about the current year and how we're reimbursing um, our transportation vendor, so, so we talk on a, on a weekly basis. So I will follow up with them.
I'm, I'm, I'm also a little concerned, and I mean, it's not really anything we're gonna do with this contract, because this is what it is, but we, we don't really know what, what school looks like next year. Especially in the fall, right? And what this may mean to this contract at some point, on some level, but. Um, this is the best information we have right now, right?
Uh, a- again, we were in a very um, interesting situation coming off, you know, being in our last. Year of the contract, in the situation that we're in and having a bid out for um, a new contract, so it was, it was certainly a, an interesting. Um, situation that we were in and, you know, these, these numbers, obviously, they're not set in stone. Um, it gives us an idea, you know, budgetary wise. As to what to expect, but there's so many unanswered questions with school, even starting next year. I, I think just for now, it's um, it's more of a guidance than anything else.
So, when did we, remind me, I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot, but when did the bid go out, like the request for bid go out? Was the COVID nineteen thing just starting at that point?
Yeah, so the bid, oh, sorry, a- a- all of it went out in the beginning of March. The actual opening was supposed to be, was scheduled for April first, but due to um, that was pretty much the, the heightened period of all this. And we weren't sure how to open it, um, how to have a virtual bid opening, so that we pushed it back to uh, the fifteenth, so it did go out. Yeah, so it did, the bid went out in a, in a pretty um, a, a pretty. Tense time for at least, you know, our district, you know, we were at the height, I think, of of this situation, so.
It's just, it's just unfortunate that, I mean, we had to do something. I mean, the bid was gonna have to go out regardless, and I mean. We, we, we had to wait till today to get the call on the rest of the school year. From the governor, so. Um, these, these things are just, I guess what they are, right?
Again, yeah, it's just, just, I don't wanna say bad timing, just, just bad timing for this, in this particular case, yes. Um, and I did, um, I just put it in the tonight's shared folder for school committee. I put in the whole bid packet that um. That went out. I wanna, I wanna say, yeah, it's a hundred and sixty-four pages, so it covers all three towns, but you can see all of the um. Information that was requested in that bid solicitation.
It looks like they went up by eleven, eleven percent or so compared to the last, last bid per year. Rough calculation.
Yeah, so the, the athletics, field trips amount, I think the athletic amount stayed relatively the same. I believe it was forty-six thousand. This current year, and I think year one of the new contract is also forty-six thousand, if I remember correctly.
We're only seeing a total number, we're not seeing year one, year two.
Well, they're all, it's all the same number. It's all the same amounts for each, for each three years.
Right, so I'm not sure, so when you say year one, is it supposed to be different year two?
No, no.
Alright, so I think we need an amendment. While we're coming up with that, does anybody else have anything they wanna say about this? Are we ready to vote?
Ready.
Alright, so can somebody make an amendment?
Em, was it your motion?
It was. So what, what do I say? Just say that I, to the amended dollar amount, which I don't remember what it is, I can write it down.
So the dollar amount is six hundred and forty-one thousand, sixty dollars and twenty cents.
So just say, I'd like to amend the motion to um, include the correct amount of six hundred and forty-one thousand. Sixty dollars and twenty cents? Is that okay?
Absolutely, and I'll second that one.
Okay, um, all those four? Now, all those against? Alright, looks like the ayes have it.
I find I get really punchy during these Zoom meetings.
That's why I keep it on mute. So then the next item, I guess we're into old business now. Uh, remote learning.
Alright, so um, just today, we uh, received news that the governor has uh, closed. Our school buildings for the remainder of the school year. Um, so uh, we will engage in remote learning. Um, and we are expecting more guidance from Desi on a couple of things with regards to remote learning. Um, there has been a, a shift uh, as of a few weeks ago, to move beyond. Um, enrichment activities and into a curriculum and standards that um, teachers felt they could go deeper with. Um, now the idea is, um, we may be getting some guidance on how we can engage students. Uh, for the remainder of the school year in remote learning, in power standards that are going to be essential for them. Uh, to hit the ground running in the fall. Uh, I think we recognize that um, some students are going to have. A different levels of success, um, being able to work in a remote learning environment. Um, it does require s- a certain set of skills. Um, some of our students, um, that is what we're working on, are some of those um, skill sets. Uh, so, in addition to considering how to move forward in the remote learning, um, we are, as the leadership team. Uh, with guidance from Desi, trying to figure out what interventions and supports may be needed over the summer, uh, so that we can catch students. Um, and catch them up. Uh, basically, some of our students uh, will not make progress in our standards, so we will have to identify those students and.
Cheryl, the only one who froze? Yes. Cheryl, we can't hear you.
About that is that it seems like there may be, yes.
Uh, we lost you at one point, so.
Okay, it was so good.
When we stopped hearing, so.
That's it. So, uh, did we hear about power standards?
No.
Okay. Alright, so let me go back to the beginning. So times two, um, we know that the governor just announced today that uh, we are closing the school buildings. For the remainder of the year, uh, which means that we will be in remote learning uh, for the remainder of the school year. So if people can nod, um, apparently my internet um, is uh, intermittent, it just came up and said. Uh, you're having a tough time here, Cheryl. So uh, for everyone in the Commonwealth, it does mean that we are moving into remote learning. Um, for the remainder of the school year. Um, there is a shift from even the original remote learning plan, uh, which was uh, for us to go deeper into some standards. That uh, teachers felt in their professional judgment, um, the majority of students uh, would be successful in. Um, to working with Desi to identify the power standards that students need to um, be. Receive instruction in, so that when they come back in the fall, um, they're able to hit the ground running. Um, and they haven't missed basically uh, the last uh, five weeks of school. Um, so we're working with Desi and expecting some guidance uh, from Desi to identify those standards uh, for teachers. And then create uh, the online experiences for students. Um, and I do think that that gets into a little bit of what we've been talking about um, with Stephanie and, and some of the concern around. How to do that online environment safely for students. Um, we've been working with David. Um, around some of the safety and security issues, both in Google Meet and in Zoom. Um, we continue to work with them. We are very close to um, what we feel have identified. And Google is now solving for us in terms of safety and security for students. Um, one of our biggest concerns is that is if a teacher has a Google Meet and doesn't log out properly. Students can on the backend go into that Google Meet at any time, that, that meet does not um, does not end. And so students could go into that um, environment and um, have a chat, uh, that is unsupervised. Um, so Google is aware of this and they are working to rectify that, and we just, at this point, are not comfortable. Um, rolling that out uh, for our elementary students. We, we feel like that should be addressed within the next week, and Zoom, as you know, um, has plenty of its issues that have been um, in the media. Regarding uh, student's security, um, and the potential for um, people to Zoom bomb, even in this environment. Um, we're very cautious of that, so uh, we are leaning toward Meet. Um, I think we're very close to having all of the issues addressed. Um, so we're hopeful that uh, we will provide uh, training for staff uh, to move into Meet for all of our students at the elementary level. Uh, in the near future. Um, one of the things I think that is um, optimistic uh, for us is that uh, I do believe that there is funding coming. For remote learning uh, resources, um, and that includes things that we have already spent money on. Uh, in terms of Chromebooks and uh, network infrastructure um, to, and hardware uh, for.
Did she freeze for anybody else? Cheryl?
What's important is to remember where she cut off. Alright, you froze again.
Yeah.
I'm almost done, so it's good.
Uh, you were speaking about the hardware uh, funding?
Okay, so we're very, we're hopeful that um, there is federal funding that will be coming to Massachusetts uh, to help. Districts like ours who had to make some substantial um. Infrastructure upgrades to allow one-to-one to happen, uh, because we were not currently a one-to-one district, so. Uh, we're very hopeful, not only from the federal government, but from the state government, um, that there's emergency monies that are being requested by the governor. Um, as we speak uh, to allow us to um. Recoup some of those costs and even move forward um, and uh, improve our remote learning environment. Uh, for teachers and students. Um, and lastly, but while I have a little bit more internet, um, the MCAS competency determinations for seniors. Um, we are waiting on guidance from Desi. Um, obviously, students cannot take MCAS at this point. Um, so we are waiting for some um, guidance on competency determinations for graduation, but also uh, for our students. In grade uh, nine and ten, who would have taken um, their science, um, what that is gonna look like. Um, and now that we're uh, closed for the year in terms of coming into the building, um, uh, we, we, we're expecting determination. Uh, I'm sorry, guidance from Desi uh, within the next week uh, for that. So I think that's all I have for remote learning, except to say, um, thank you very much. Uh, to the admin team for their work in creating this, um, building this plane as we've been flying it. Um, for the staff who have really just done an amazing job of trying to learn and implement at the same time. Um, they have been really uh, supportive of each other and also of their students. Um, and so thank you again to all students and families, because they've really had to pick up, uh, it's a heavy lift um, to do a lot of this work at home. So we appreciate everything that everybody's doing, and we have received a lot of good feedback, um, both in suggestions, but also in celebrations of the work. That's been going on, so thank you to everybody.
So, um. I, I think, i- this is just me speaking, I, you know, feel free if you speak up if you disagree with me, but I think, I think we need to keep this on our agenda as a standing item. At least through the fall, 'cause I, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure what we're gonna see for updates over the next few months and. What the school years, you know, for next year is gonna actually look like. I just think this is gonna be very fluid over the next couple of months. You guys disagreed? You, you, you not want it as a standing item? I just, I just think it's worth having here. If there's no updates at that time, then, then we just quickly go over it with no updates.
That makes sense.
That's fine.
Alright. Finance committee.
So I think even the governor mentioned that, because this is something new to all of us. Uh, there will be some, some discrepancy in the way what some students get and, you know, others don't. Is, d- does Desi have any plans to make up for what that means? I mean, typically, it doesn't have to be education and anything, if there is a gap somewhere, if you just let two individuals start at the same time and there's a gap. Either you have a good plan to make up for it, or just they end up carrying that load with them, and they, you know, they go forward with that handicap. Do you know whether there are plans to accommodate or to make up for the gaps that uh, this, this is causing, at least this year, as we are getting used to it?
That's a great question. Um, I would say at the Desi level, um, no. Um, I think there's an expectation that, and an understanding that these gaps are going to occur, and they're gonna occur for, for a lot of different reasons. Um, I think, um, our work at the administrative level, um, at the team level, really is about. Um, doing exactly what you're talking about, which is, right now, thinking about how can we. Um, assess students in meaningful ways to identify where the gaps are. And then provide the support and the instruction that students are gonna need. Um, so really, that's gonna be our focus. Um, over the next few months. Um, and again, you know, we did have. We, we've purchased MAP and we've been using MAP, and that's a great tool, but we have to wait a little bit for MAP, because. MAP really is about testing, um, if students test in January at this level. The idea is that students receive instruction, and then in May, when they test again, there's this level of anticipated growth. Because instruction has occurred. I think right now what we're gonna see is, we cannot assume that the same kind of instruction has happened. And so using MAP in that way, I think, is gonna be difficult. So part of what we're talking about, the team level is. How do we create assessments for students, so that we truly know whether they've um, maintained? Or whether their grade level, or whether they need support. or whether they need support, either over the summer coming back. So that's really the, going to be the bulk of our instructional and curriculum work and assessment work over the next couple of months. I think we're well positioned to do that. There are some, some, some quicker types of assessment that we can do with students to give us a feel and then once we start instructing, I think we can use our teacher's professional judgment around whether or not students continue to need that or, you know, some of our students, this is very traumatic for and maybe they're not learning well right now, but when they come back and they're back in school and they're with their friends and with their teachers, they're going to be more successful. So I think there's a lot that we have to consider and plan for. And again, you know, to Mike's point, whether we're even here in buildings or what that looks like when we come back in September is all part of the conversation.
And I think this, this kind of highlights some of the gaps that we've been talking about for a while.
Yes.
When you, when, and, and these are gaps in our overall educational system. When you try to translate a system that is primarily based on an instructor delivering in a classroom setting and you try to convert that to a technology-based learning and you expect that there will be engagement by the students, they have to know what that means, they have to understand how to engage and they have to really get the best of it. And then the teachers become their coaches and, you know, they, they become sport mechanism. And we're not, I mean, overall, this is not just Granby. I know that we're not there yet. Hopefully, that's why I asked whether Desi's doing something about it because I'm hoping that they see this as a wake-up call overall. You know, just talking about technology and all that on their part is all good, but if they're not really reinforcing a technology-based education or student-led education, you know, then, then any, anytime we're going to find ourselves in this type of situation, some kids will be disadvantaged and that's not fair.
Absolutely.
Yep. I feel like this also goes back to the whole blizzard bag thing. We were at a little bit of an advantage because we had that, but then Desi was going away from that. So I find it very interesting because those districts from people that I know that had had the blizzard bags felt like they were in, you know, better shape, had some kind of meat around it. So I'm wondering if there'll be long-term implications from that as well, if they might revisit that, like you had talked about, you know, redo what it is that they're doing, because what they're saying in the news is that this is not going to be a one-time occurrence, like it's not going to be a once-in-a-century type of thing now that we're such a global community, right? So.
It's just very difficult, but I feel so bad for the kids. I mean, the teachers are doing all they can this, but there's nothing that duplicates that teacher standing in front of the kids in the classroom day after day, assessing what they're doing, knowing what they can do and not do. This has got to be very difficult, very difficult for everyone.
So, so you brought up, Cheryl, you brought up something, I'm not sure I understood it, I just want to make sure I do understand it. That map testing, I get, I get what you're saying, it's not going to show us growth, but is, is there the ability within the district to do some sort of testing at home so that we can get a baseline as to where the students are now?
Right, so, yep, that's something that we're looking at. What, you know, what can we do in terms of assessments? You know, it could be that we look at the the literature and the math series that we use and look at some of the unit assessments that are in those materials and supplies. Much of that is available online, but it's sort of putting the cart before the horse a little bit. We need to make sure that we're assessing the right standards. So once the standards are addressed and these are the standards that we know we need to focus on in these last weeks of school in remote learning, then we can make sure that.
Oh, she froze.
Foes again.
Come on Cheryl.
Her, her remote experience is not a good one.
Well, not today. Last time it was me.
Did I lose you?
Yeah.
So let's say.
Yeah, go ahead.
So let's say, for example, Desi decides, you know, with input from teachers and from superintendents and curriculum folks, that time is an essential power standard that kids need to know. When, when kids come back to school, when, when we do a quick assessment of, you know, clock telling or time telling, if they can't do it, then our intervention is whole class. Versus, you know, if 50% of the kids can tell time, then we've got to figure out very quickly, alright, which of these kids really needs some direct instruction, some small group work around time? And how can we structure some things for other kids so that they continue moving forward? I think that's what we're going to see moving forward in the fall.
So are we, when are we supposed to get those power standards?
So they're working on them right now. So we, what, what I heard this morning was they're hoping for next week. Probably by the end of the week, they're going to identify those standards.
Cheryl, presently, are you, are you, are everybody just focusing on reading and math? Are you doing science, social studies, all the standards? Or are you focusing on mainly reading and math?
I think, I think that there are lessons and activities designed for all content areas. Remember, when this started, we were really focused on keeping kids in the learning mindset. So if we had students that were really interested in science, that was our leverage point in for students to keep them interested and engaged. So an activity might be, you know, hey, go to weather.com and chart the weather over, you know, the, the week. And so I think those are the kinds of activities that teachers had been creating for students. Because again, we were more in the engagement, learning mindset, you know, as opposed to teaching new standards. So.
That makes sense.
That conversation will now change.
Right, probably do some cross-curricular kind of thing.
Yes. Yep. I think the other thing to remember is that we are very fortunate that David and Stacy were able to transition us very quickly to one-to-one. And so our remote learning plan is pretty well established now for students to have access pretty much K through 12. I think we have to be realistic that throughout the Commonwealth, that is not essentially the same. And so some, some districts are looking at things that the commissioner is saying are sufficient, like still going to paper packets, reading lists, simple reading lists for students to engage in while they're home, doing remote learning. We are doing remote learning in an online environment for the most part. We do have a lot of activities where kids are going outside and looking up letters of the alphabet in the arts and working with our art teachers in that way. So it's, it's exciting, but primarily our kids are going into the Google Classroom, getting assignments, getting ideas, getting instruction. So we really are bearing the, the benefit of all of the work that the teachers have done around blizzard bags, all of the work groups that they've been engaged in with Google Classroom. So we are really well positioned for the majority and we do have some staff who are concerned and, and not quite, you know, feeling comfortable yet. And, and like our students, we need to wrap around everyone to make sure that they have the support they need so that they're comfortable making, you know, the instruction accessible for all their students.
Anything else? Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna make this as, as part of the old business for, for at least a few months, I would, I would think.
Sounds good.
Okay. The threshold for past due school lunch balances.
Yeah, so we talked about this last week in some detail and I, I just want to recommend, I guess, an amount to set for us to then go after these past due lunch balances. In the past, it's been $5. I would, I would recommend anything over $10 we should go after. But I, I just, I would like to vote so then we can get a, a start on recovering some of these past due lunch balances that total a, a pretty good amount. So I would recommend 10, I think that's a good number, but I'm not sure if anybody else has any other ideas on, on a, on an amount.
I think $10 might be a good place to start. There's a lot of money above the $10 range.
Yes, there sure is.
If you look at the, the second line, that's, that's over $1,000 right there, right?
Yep. I think it just gives us a good, a good starting point.
So oddly, one, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is separate though, I think we already talked about it last meeting as to what was meant when you said, you know, go after, right? I mean, on the surface, that sounds a little rough, but I think, I think you laid out for us.
Yeah, so, so trying to recover some of these balances. So I, I had talked about it last meeting a little bit. We've, we've tried in the past and, and the school secretaries have tried in the past and are still trying. I took it one step a little further and had reached out to Steve Nally to see if there was something he could help us out with from the town side. I had thought maybe a demand notice and we talked about it. It's more costly to go through the demand notice process and you have to go to Core and all that stuff. It just wouldn't, it wouldn't make fiscal sense to go through it that way. But what he did agree to would, if I drafted up some type of letter, letter, it would come from his office. That was one part of it and the other part is kind of being more consistent with going after these balances and making sure families are aware of the balances in a more consistent, timely manner and just being able to try to, try to have a process in place to recover these balances moving forward. Again, it's not for lack of trying, at least at the school level. I just feel at this point, and you guys can see the balances are getting up there, it's a pretty significant amount of past due balances and I feel like we just need to take it a little more seriously and, and just try a new way of, of getting out to these families that we can work with you. If there's, you know, if you have a past due balance, we're, we're not, we, we don't need it all in one if you can't. It's more of let's, let's work together, try to recoup as much of this as possible.
What has happened so far, Adam? I know you talked about last time, what, how did these get so high? And what, whose main responsibility is to try to get the money back? Is it Chartwell's? Is it the school?
Yeah, no, no, it's, yeah, it's not Chartwell's, although we've, you know, they, they certainly play a part in kind of helping us recoup some of this. Ultimately, and, and Bill has suggested this in the past and I'm not sure if he commented last meeting, but it should, it should be a business office procedure. For right now, the, the secretaries at the schools are doing it. And I agree, it should probably be taken out of their hands and, and into the business office. So again, this would be the first step, that, you know, voting on a threshold would be the first step in coming up with a, a formal process on how the district would go about recovering negative lunch balances.
Is this one of those fees, sorry, is this one of those fees that would need to be settled up before graduation? Like if it, there's any that are seniors for whatever? Yeah?
Yep, so, so again, and we touched on this a little bit last time, so there are a few fees that go, no, 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 that's okay, that's okay. There are a few fees that Stephen and the high school make sure are paid before kids get their cap and gown. This is kind of a separate in and of itself fee, but yes, we would like to have all fees for seniors. I want to be clear though, these are fees that are, the students might not even be with us anymore, but they, we want to reach out because they owe a significant amount of money. These are families and students that are still with us. So there's kind of a, a two-part process to this. But yes, there is, there is a system in place, at least at the high school, that would, they wouldn't be able to get their cap and gown unless all of their outstanding fees and dues are paid up at that time.
And then, I know we talked about this one last time, but when we were gonna get this list, we were gonna, I think you were gonna check to see how many of those people were, well, free wouldn't be an issue, but reduced, would, do reduced lunches count in this as well? Like if they're, if people are having trouble. I'm just thinking, if I was in a trouble right now getting a message that my kid's lunch that I'm not going back to school for is.
Totally, so, so again, and like I said last time, I had put this on the agenda for last meeting way before any of this started. So I understand now, starting to send letters out and, and, and I'm not saying once we vote tonight, we're gonna send a letter out tomorrow.
Okay.
It's more, I would have liked to do that maybe two or three months ago when I thought of this and put it on the agenda. Now it would be, let's just get a threshold and let's maybe start working on the actual process and then maybe for the start of next school year, we can start implementing, you know, that process or, or parts of it. I would certainly not now in this time, hey, you might be laid off and we don't have school, but by the way, can you pay your students' past due lunch balance? I, I understand that's obviously not the, the road we want to go down right now, so.
Adam, what's the, can you remind us what's the average cost of lunch right now? It doesn't have to be exact.
Yeah, so it's a little under $3 is the average price per lunch right now. $2.87, I believe it is.
So, so what I'm trying to get to is if we go with the $10 amount, that's about three meals. Is that realistic that, you know, in three days, something will turn around and, you know, we're expecting that? Or should we just have that threshold a little different?
So, again, I, I would say that's not entirely up to you guys, but it's certainly up to you guys to discuss. It's more the point, at least for us, it just gives us a, a baseline as to where we start going after these, these balances. I thought $10 was a significantly, relatively fair number. But, you know, I'm open for discussion or thoughts or suggestions on, on something other than that.
I would think $10 is fair. You make an effort to get anybody above $10, to try to get where you can get recovered and go from there. I mean, maybe, maybe you'll do better when it's raised up a notch. It is tough to visit the secretary level, but if it moves up a bit, say, hey, you know, you owe this money, can you help us out? You know, if they owe $50, they can pay 25, you, you take what they are able to afford you and to cut the deficit down and, and realizing people are in tough shapes on some of these. Maybe other, some of these people are in worse shape now. Make an effort to get what you can and I think the rest has to just be eaten, I think.
Certainly, yeah, and, and we're certainly not going to recover 100% of these. Again, it's, it's just a, there's no formal process or in place and we'd like to get one in place and then we can move forward. I'm sure this is, this discussion's not over. This would be the first step and, and we can move forward.
So when you said before that some of these kids aren't even with us anymore, were they like school choice kids? Well, they wouldn't have been kids that graduated because they wouldn't have been allowed to do it without settling a fee, right? So where, why would the kids have been able to leave with a, a balance? I don't understand.
So again, they could have withdrawn for certain reasons.
Moved.
Moved, yeah.
Yeah, there, there could, there's, there's several reasons they might not be with us. They're not school, I mean, they could be school choice kids, but there's not, that's not the reason is because they're school choice kids.
Right.
Some of them may be school choice.
I'm thinking if they, they moved or a school choice out or something, but.
Right, yep, yep. And I, I, again, I want to say, and Steve, I'm not sure if he's on, if he wants to chime in and comment, I believe past due lunch balances were kind of separate from the fees that were collected prior to them getting caps and gowns. I'm not 100% sure if Steve's in here, even on the chat, he wants to chime in, but I, I, there are seniors that have graduated, I believe, that do have, have balances. But to answer your question, there's a variety of different reasons why there would be balances for students that are no longer in the district.
Yeah, I am, we do try to collect the school lunch at the end of the year, but there's a variety of ways that a student that's no longer that with us could potentially have a balance. They may not have participated in graduation, they might not have graduated, they might have just left. We, I mean, we have students who just kind of, we have a student, we have students that we're working with now that are even in and out. So in those situations, sometimes the lunch debt isn't our first priority and then when we do get caught up with them, it's about trying to track it down and have them work with us, like Adam said. But most of them do get paid off prior to graduation or when they're picking up their caps and gowns.
Thank you, Stephen.
So if you're you if you're looking for a motion, I'll make that motion, um, Mike.
Well, I just, I just, I wasn't looking for a motion, I just, I just want to make sure that um. One, this this vote tonight is really just to set the first step of a a a standard. Um, of saying the ten dollars, at that point, we're gonna start making an effort to try to collect. I I do think it 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 may, it may be beneficial um, when we've have a better understanding of the full uh. I guess all the details of what's gonna happen in the in that part of um, the work happens. Uh, just so we understand better what, you know, what types of letters are gonna go out, when and by whom. I know that's probably the next, you know, the next step. But right now, you're just looking for us to vote on a threshold and just to get the the process going.
This would be the start and the end of the process, you know, for this current time. Once we vote it, um, again, based on the the current climate, I'm not gonna go any further, except for maybe. Trying to come up with some process internally, but there will be no letters, nothing that goes out to obviously any family um, in the in the near future.
Yeah, I apologize. I I meant to say, like, right now, we understand it's not in the cards, but um, at some point in time. We we have to assume things will be, you know. That that things will be different again, and and we may pick up something at that, at that point in time.
Yep.
Okay.
And regardless of what we decide to do. The students will not be subjected to anything, correct? Just, you know, the they. This is not a conversation that will take place with them. This is something that will happen in the background, uh, not involving the students. Correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we have to wait. Jen just kind of. Stopped to wait for a second.
I'm here, I just stopped video for a second, I needed to stretch.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that when we go into a vote, that your video is back on.
Okay, here I am, sorry.
So I'll make a motion to establish a threshold of ten dollars. Uh, before um, the school finance office uh, moves to recover. Uh, uh, the cost of unpaid lunch uh, money.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Um, any, um, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Uh, the next item.
Thank you.
Next item is to fifth um. See, uh, discussions we've had over the joint meeting and the budget request from uh, the. Finance committee. I don't know if you have seen the emails. I did, I did reach out to John. After our last meeting, I followed up going directly to him, indicating that. We were going to probably set. Our hearing, and I believe that's already been posted um, for early May. And he had indicated that they they still had a couple things. I I saw that Cheryl sent those over to him the next day. I asked him um, for some dates and times for a mutual meeting. And still have not heard anything back from that request. What was interesting, and again, I don't know if you guys have read this, his email. His response back to me was um, that under the current circumstances, he was. Well, him and the finance committee, I believe, were looking for us to try to come up with a budget that did not include the three oh five. So I don't know what our next step at this point should be. I did ask for joint meetings to try to discuss that with them. Um, and I don't know if we should be making those moves now, or if we should just move forward with what we have. So any?
So when he's saying that, do you think he's gonna get up on town floor and say? To go against the three oh five then, but that three oh five is not a separate vote on town floor, is it? Every year?
It is. Well, it's 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 wrapped up in the single vote. It's it's net school spending plus the three oh five, and I do believe he would, because he did last year.
No, last year he was okay with it.
The rest of the finance committee was, he was, he was a dissenter, and that's why somebody else read the opinion.
I would think that in the present climate, uh, look at it two ways, that the three oh five just needs to stay where it is. Uh, because what if we get less money from the state, state, you know, you can't, this is not the time to touch it. Maybe in the near future, with more time and discussion, but this is not the time to touch it, and I'm sure. Since they haven't got back to you to go over the details, I think we just let it go, uh, and it should stay in there this year.
Well, I I I have my own beliefs on on certain things myself. One of them is is the three oh five should stay. Um, I have certain opinions as to if the town needs certain things, there there should be some, some other types of fu- funding coming from. From other um, from from other sources. I I do understand that the town has some needs now that they didn't have before. At the same time, so does so doesn't the schools. I just don't know. How it looks for us to stand our ground and go out to town meeting. As is, or 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 even the hearing, as is knowing full well that. They are going to try to, they appear to be uh, looking to make a recommendation to go without the three oh five.
So Mike, what is the, what is the worst that can happen? You can go down to your next school spending. Right? So I'm not sure at this point, I, you know, I agree with what Jim said, that it's very late in the in the process. And we had uh, multiple meetings on this topic the last so many years that I've been on the committee. I really think our our uh, perspective on education has been very short-sighted. We talked about uh, long term, but we could not even agree on how we should uh, finance our school district short term. Uh, and we are basically talking about three oh five, that's been okay just a couple of years ago. Two years ago, when we had our meetings, as I recall, and it probably, it might be on some video somewhere too. We were, you know, in a kind and joking way, uh, welcomed, saying, hey, you know, if it's just net school spending plus three oh five, we don't even have to have the meetings. That was almost a motto. Suddenly, you know, the 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 target is moving again. And at the end of the day, a budget conversation doesn't necessarily have to be this way. I think we all agreed on that. But the nature of the of the funding for education in Granby was such that three oh five happened to be the only buffer we had in there. There was, there was really nothing else that we could look at. The rest of it was really negotiation, going in front of the town and just making our case and pleading. Sometimes we got it, so many times we did not get it. That's why we had to cut so many positions, that that's why we had, we found ourselves in the situation that we were in. And now that we are just showing everyone that we are moving forward and we are making some improvements. Suddenly, that three oh five becomes fair game so late in the planning process, that doesn't make any sense to me. So what the reason why I'm saying, you know, what's 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 left is, it's either net school spending. Or net school spending three oh five. If the town says, we don't really want to give you the three oh five, and town being the town meeting, then that's a different conversation to have. But I, you know, I'm, I agree with Jim, just we would, I I, because we planned it that way. Not because out of any capricious behavior, because we already had planned it that way, and we gave a lot of notice that we had planned it that way. I would just go with what we had planned, and then see what happens when we uh, get into the discussion.
No, that's, I I am in one hundred percent agreement with everything that has been said. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands. That they are looking at us to try to do without the three oh five. And I personally don't think we should. I personally think we should stick with what we have out there, what's been out there since day one on our budget this year.
I agree.
Um, and and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that this may end up as being an argument on town meeting floor. And I'm and I'm fine with that argument on town meeting floor. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it.
So I guess the other, the the other, the other question too would be, are any other town departments looking at a three hundred thousand dollar plus cut in their budget for this year? And I think that's a a question that, you know, should be answered a- at some point, because if if not, then, you know, why are we the ones. Targeted to to make a three hundred dollar reduction in our in our budget?
And if I might, um, a couple of things. We've been working really hard, I think, to educate the community. Educate the finance committee, educate the select board, that net school spending is not the goal. Um, when you look at net school spending districts, you're looking at districts like Fall River, New Bedford, Lawrence. And all of those districts are either in or going into state receivership. Um, and this idea that we just haven't seemed to tear down. That net school spending is is what we should be spending and all we have to spend. Um, that does not allow us to have the education system in Granby that Granby families want. Um, I think we need to be very clear about that, and for whatever reason, this conversation has circled back again. To we only have to give net school spending. That's an erroneous assumption. Um, and for whatever reason, we're back at that that same space. Um. I think it's important that we begin again to have the conversation with finance committee select board, that we need to be looking at a level service budget. And net schools, the parameter that we get from the town every year is not a level service budget. We've been able to make it a level service budget, because we've been making adjustments within the school department. But I have been saying for the last two years anyway, that we will not be able to do this. Because our increases to contractual obligations, our increases in expenses. Will outstrip what we have in revolving accounts to offset these increases. So I have been saying we have probably five years, this economic environment has probably shortened that. Um, so, you know, this is gonna be interesting in the next couple of years. Um, but we really need to s- to to sit down and have the conversation that this parameter that we're given. Um, is not adequate. Um, and I thought we were on the road to that discussion, and then this year, out of the blue, in April, March. Um, all of a sudden, we're back to, we're only gonna give net school spending, and we want that budget. Um, I'm with Mike, I think it's late in the season uh, to be having that conversation. Um, I think our budget is solid and conservative, um, and fiscally fits within uh, the parameters of the town. Um, and I'm proud of that budget and the work that's gone into it. Um, and I would like to have the opportunity to sit with FinCom and with the select board. Um, to have the same kind of conversations that we had last year, um, because I do think that there was a lot of understanding. Um, that came from those conversations. Um, and so it's disheartening to once again, not have the feedback or the ability to sit. Uh, with these groups of people.
I find it very disheartening that they're not even getting back to us. I find that insulting a little bit, like, you know, they wanted, they were, they seemed very open to the idea of having this give and take and wanting to be part of a. You know, having these cu- conversations to make the whole process go better, and it feels like we're getting radio silence on the other end, and. To not wanting to have these joint meetings is is upsetting.
My gut feeling would be that the finance committee would support this three oh five. You might remember, I think this. It reared its ugly head this year. They're not correct, when we got the first figures from the state, showed an increase of about three hundred something thousand dollars to Granby, right? And then someone said, oh, that's the same as the overriding money. So that's where it raised its ugly head. And I think, and then when the in-kind costs came our way, it was a lot more than we thought, which cut into that, so. It seems to me it needs to stay where it is, and my gut reaction would be the finance committee. In a vote would support the school still keeping the three oh five.
Yeah, I I I sincerely hope so, and I and I don't, I don't anticipate us being able or 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 or. Or actually think it's a good idea to make any adjustments. I just wanted everybody aware, um, since now we are really up against our hearing deadline.
Mike, I think that's why you have not heard back from them, because the vast majority, I think, support the school still keeping through five. That's my gut as to why you have not heard back.
Okay, so we're all good still about about keeping, what is it, the May fifth, um, you know, hearing date, as is Cheryl?
Yep. And so that's just, that's just the hearing, right? That's for where we present it to whoever wants to come, but that's not. Writing the article for town meeting or anything like that, right? That's just going over it.
So the hearing, so after the hearing, I believe we're scheduled to.
To vote on it.
You know, that night, I think we're scheduled to convene to vote on it, and at that point, it gets submitted over. To the town to write the warrant. Is that, is that correct?
Okay, and then, so my next follow-up question, I'm still learning about how a lot of these processes work, so I bear with me. Um, but then, so we write our article, we have it with our budget for the three oh five, and it gets voted down on town floor. The way I've understood it in the past is that that the the budget doesn't get passed at town meeting, then the school doesn't get any money. And then how, then we don't have any operating budget, so. I know that's usually when they make an amendment or something to get rid of the three oh five or whatever, right? So what what happens next? What happens if we, you know, we we do what we want to do? But then um, town floor doesn't give us the three oh five. What do we do then?
So um, eh, because the three oh five is separate, I'm I'm assuming. Our our. I'll call it net school spending amount would be approved, and then the three oh five wouldn't be approved. At that point. If if I I believe, Jen, that's what you're saying, our 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 main budget is approved, but the additional three oh five is not approved, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
At at that point, I think that's, there's nothing we would be able to do.
So, right, my my understanding is that when the school committee votes their budget, that's what gets sent to Chris to get put on the warrant. That.
Okay.
Our budget right now is the parameter that we were given, the net school spending plus three oh five. That that's the warrant as written, um, unless there's a change between now and town meeting. Um, then finance committee at the town meeting would have to make um, an amendment. Um, or argue that they were not in support, or they were in support, which is what they do every year. They're either in support of the budget or not in support of the budget. Um, you know, for the first couple of years that I was here, it was very difficult. They were not in support of the budget. We were on town meeting floor, we were asking for lots of money. Um, it was scary time, um, but, you know, they were very supportive of the budget on town meeting floor, and um, that would be my understanding moving into this year. Um, like Mr. Petrus said, um, that would be my hope, uh, because we have not heard contrary to that. Um, but I also, you know, to Mike's point, don't want to be naive, um, but they would have to not support the budget as we put it forward. But they couldn't say, you know, oh, we're gonna give you net school spending, but we're not gonna give you the three oh five, like, they would have to, we are gonna put forward a full number.
Right, and and so, so that's why I wanted to clear it up, Jen, because if. If they don't, if at town meeting floor, that full number doesn't get approved, it doesn't mean we aren't funded. There's legislation in place that says. If your budget that you're proposing doesn't get funded, you revert back to what you were approved for last year, and they increment it in one twelfth. Allocations until you can come up with a um, approved budget. So there'd have to be a special town meeting where they would approve a revised budget. And then that would be our FY twenty-one budget going forward, but if it took us, I'm just throwing this out there. Two or three months to get a budget approved, they would go back to our fiscal year twenty budget. Break that out into twelve increments and allocate it on a per month basis until we had a fiscal year twenty-one budget approved. So we wouldn't go without funding, just just to be clear. I don't, I'm not sure if that's what you meant, that's what I heard, but I just wanted to be clear. It's not like we wouldn't get any money, we would get it, it would just be in a different, it it would be allocated differently.
It was kind of what I I was asking, and I I probably sound um. Naive, which I guess I am with some of that stuff, but I know that that has been said on town floor, like, if we don't get this, you know, and we don't vote on the budget, then there's. There's nothing there, so, or, you know, we vote down the budget, the way sometimes the amendments are written or whatever, so I just want to make sure that we're. We're aware of what might happen or ha- like, I'm sure you are, are, I was not aware of what happens. If we don't get it.
Well, I just want to be very positive, and I think in these difficult times, that that we should have no problem getting that, the bu- school budget approved. Really, I just don't, I think about, I don't think it'll be an issue.
I I and like, and like, I really hope so. I just, now again, I just want to keep this on the agenda, and I just wanted everybody aware that. It's not like we have not been able to meet with FinCom like we had hoped to, um, and and I don't have any real. You know, I I don't have anything from them saying that they're okay with 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 what our plans are. Um, I just wanted that out there.
Thank you.
So now we're on to FY uh, twenty-one budget.
I I mean, there's essentially, we I we, I think we just had the conversation, there's really, as far as I know, no update. Not to scare anybody, but again, there's been talks about reduced funding for next year based on the current situation at this point. It's all hearsay. There is no definitive answer if we're going to have reduced budget next year. So the talk is out there. Again, that's, it's all hearsay at this point. So as as we've been told, kind of at the state level, we have, we have state finance calls with Jay Sullivan.
Wasn't Cheryl this time?
I told Addie she had to get offline. She's all mad at me. Oh my God, you can't be online right now.
We'll be done pretty soon, tell her.
That's why I said, people, let's go. I'm going to have an angry 15-year-old in a minute. It's going to get ugly here.
That's why I'm on Lance's iPad. He was like, no way, you can't take my Chromebook away from me tonight.
I'm I'm counting the items right here.
Almost done.
Netflix, it's killing me.
Netflix party.
So I don't know why I left off, but real quick, again, there's no updates. We're moving forward. Again, there's hearsay about cuts next year. That's all talk right now. There's nothing definitive. And obviously, as I have more information on that, we, you know, I will let everyone know. But as of right now, we are, you know, kind of, I guess, waiting to hear back from Finance Committee. Or we're just going to move forward for the May 5th public hearing and go from there.
That's all we can do. We can't control what's going to happen next year or anything. We have no control of that. So we really can't worry about it. Everyone will be in the same boat. If the state doesn't get the funds and cuts it back, well, we'll deal with it. It'll have to be dealt with as it comes. But we have enough to worry about now without worrying about that.
So one of the things I want to remind the committee about is if you start hearing things like the Student Opportunity Act funding is not going to be in the amount that is was initially proposed in the legislation. Granby was not a recipient of a lot of Student Opportunity Act funding. Our increases came in the required net school spending on the town side. So if we, if if you start hearing like, oh, they're cutting the Student Opportunity Act funding, just take a big, deep breath, because that probably isn't going to impact us. It's more the the urban districts and the districts with high special education and EL costs. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball either. But there is going to be quite, I I think you're going to start to hear some of the panic out there around the revenue projections for next year and what that means. I'd also like to remind the committee that I think many of you were around in 2008 when there were the ERA funds that came, and those were substantial. And they were specifically targeted toward employment, keeping Americans employed. So if I had a crystal ball, I will be begging through my crystal ball to legislatures around employment. Because our industry and particularly in Granby, the largest percent of our budget is salary and keeping people employed. So if we can manage to leverage some federal ERA-like grants, some state ERA-like money for employment, I think we'll be okay. But if you're concerned, please reach out so we can talk about what you're hearing and what you're seeing. And and I think together we can, you know, have our feelers out, but I don't want anybody to panic yet. I I think we're pretty well positioned, and I do think the town is well positioned as well. They have been and continue to be very conservative. And this is probably one of that benefits to that type of budgeting, that there are stabilization accounts to get us through some situations like this. And I think if we work together and and we're conservative in our budgets and continue that, that we will be okay.
I would say real quick, I think one one area that we would see probably a reduction in revenue is in circuit breaker. And only because a lot of the services that would get us over that third circuit breaker threshold are, not that they're not necessarily being provided right now, but they're certainly not being provided in the capacity they would be if we were in school. But that is still an ongoing conversation on how to, what costs we can, we can throw into circuit breaker now, how much service these providers are actually giving our students. But I would, I'm pretty confident, unfortunately, that we would see a reduction in circuit breaker revenue. I just, no one has any idea of what that might look like, but that would have an impact on on next year. Again, I'm confident we will see a reduction as to what that might be. If we're kind of too far out at this point, there's a lot of unanswered questions at this point to know the the level of severity that would impact that revenue. So.
The the cost that we have built into the budget for the special education for next year, does any of that need to be relooked at? With the understanding that we don't even know what the next school year is actually going to look like, like, is anybody going to address some of those? Those thoughts?
Yeah, I'll make Carol do it.
Like, I'm not looking for answers. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're looking at all of this stuff.
Yeah. So one of, one of the things that we have to be careful about, and we've been talking about are making sure that we're working with our families, particularly our students on 504 and IEPs to make sure that they are making progress. And if they aren't making progress, what that might look like in the summer so that we can help kids make that progress. I'm particularly concerned about our social emotional learning students. Much of their work and in their goals is around, obviously, social, working in groups. That, obviously, in an online environment is very challenging. We're doing our best with that. But, you know, I think our social emotional programming is very strong when kids are in school. And we're moving into a remote environment to support students. But I do think we're going to have to work with parents and families and make some adjustments over the summer and as students come back. So, yes, there'll be costs certainly to doing that work. And it is something that, in addition to how we instruct students when they come back and make catch-up growth, these are parts of the conversation that the leadership team are having to move forward and have a good plan in place for the fall, the summer, really, and the fall.
And there's also a question, how are they going to, how are they going to do all the team meetings for the special ed kids? How are they going to do all that?
So I don't want to speak out of turn. Yep, they are having them. The, if I speak out of turn, maybe Carol, if she's there, can help out. But what I would say is, we are having many of our meetings online. They're going very well. Our new meetings, students that would be new into special education or 504, I don't believe we're having those. But again, if Carol's there, she's there. I don't think those are the meetings. There she is.
Take care of the present ones first, I'm sure.
Right. Which meetings, Carol? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Hi, everyone. So we are having, we, for for those meetings that testing was completed, we have hold some, we've held some initial meetings through Zoom. We are, have held some reevaluation meetings, and we are moving forward with annual meetings. So we are trying to maintain timelines. If a reeval was, meeting was, if the testing was completed, we're holding that meeting. I'm still waiting for some guidance from as far as timelines for these things. There's, you know, they're coming slow with their information. But they're recommending that we work with families. It's not humanly possible for us to hold all of, to test all of the kids that we're doing the spring and in the fall, in the fall. So, you know, we're going to have to do some juggling. But if we have the testing completed, we are holding the meetings. And we are clearly holding all annual meetings with parents that are willing to participate remotely.
Well, thanks for doing all that.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's, it's actually been very good. It gives us a chance to see how the kids are doing, you know, and talk to the parents about how they are doing remotely. And we are also designing individual learning plans for all of the students on IEPs. So I've been working with staff, and those will be going out. Some of them will go out this week, and some of them will go out next week.
Thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think, I think what I was trying to get to and maybe worded it poorly was would would we be expecting any of the costs to go up? Simply because of certain, certain things may be full, and they may want to charge more to
So you you actually worded the question perfectly. I actually didn't answer it. So our our anticipation of increased costs would be in if we're providing additional services for students who are here with us. But you did mention, you know, or implied, you know, our students that are in out-of-district placements, will there be less available to us? I think Carol can speak to that.
So we are currently funding our out-of-district placements. And the out-of-district schools are providing individual learning plans for students and tracking their progress. Our in-district kids, some of them are doing great with the virtual learning. We're able through Google Classroom, through Google Meet, through Zoom meetings, meeting their needs. But some of our higher needs students are kids that need discrete trials in our ABA room. They're really, it's really hard to have a student that's used to having someone sitting right next to them, directing them to try and do it through a Google Meet. And so those are the students that, yes, we are going to have to catch them up. And it's not from our lack of trying. I know the ABA teacher is constantly in touch with the families and trying to engage with the students. But it's a different medium that they're, the kids are struggling with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think your picture's
She's emerging from the background.
That's so cool. Wow.
She's like, time's up, mom.
No, now they can. You got to get in closer. There she is. Oh.
There she is.
I see her.
I just got homemade popcorn.
Addie, did you hear that? Yeah, homemade. She's working. I'm working. You're making.
Whirly pop. Way to go.
We do have popcorn. Sure.
Do we, do we need to discuss a town meeting June 8th anymore or or the hearing?
Will it even still be June 8th with the schools closed through the year now or?
Yeah. So the question to us was if the schools were closed, could the facility still be used? Yes, absolutely. I think we would get guidance from the Board of Health in terms of a municipal response and expectation for social distancing and being able to hold the meeting. We'll have to wait for that. But that's on the town side. I responded that the buildings are available.
In this, in this June 8th meeting, just just so I can get it clear in my head, is usually the first one where they kind of wrap up, move money to the reserve accounts, and then adjourn and postpone the rest of the meeting until the next one.
Right.
So I wonder if we're still going to expect that to happen with this. Okay, I don't, I don't think any of us has, you know, has the answer to that. It's just, it's just thinking. So then the next item is the grade six pilot.
Sure. So so as we discussed at the last school committee meeting, a survey was sent out to parents and guardians of the current grade five students to determine whether they and their students may be interested in participating in a pilot next year. After providing the recipients of the survey a high-level description of the program, we asked them the following question, would you be interested in helping develop and participate in this pilot program with us? So first of all, thank you very much. We had 37 parents and guardians who responded to the survey. Of the 37 respondents, 22 expressed a strong or some interest in the pilot program, with specifically eight saying yes, and 14 maybe. And then 15 did say that they did not have any interest in participating.
Find the 22 for me, please.
Sorry?
The the 22 is the, say the numbers again.
Eight with a yes, an absolute yes, and then 14 with a maybe. And actually, one came in today with a yes. So that's a nine, yes, and 14 maybe. Many, many of the respondents also provided comments and thoughtful questions helped us better understand the additional details you would like to have to move forward. With that said, while our administrative team was focusing on this work, over the last two weeks, the world around us has continued to change due to the coronavirus pandemic. Although we are hopeful that we will be able to return to classrooms later this semester, today, the governor confirmed that we will not be returning to the school buildings for the remainder of the school year. Equally important is the economic uncertainty of the next several months and its potential financial impact on the state, local, and school budgets. So in light of all of this and the rapid change, changing information and these continuing uncertainties, we've decided to pause this work related to the pilot and also other similar effort. Again, the information is coming to us very rapidly. The administrative team is working really hard to ensure that our decisions reflect our collective understanding of this information and this changing landscape. And our goal truly is to remain focused on ensuring that students know they are safe, that their teachers are safe, and that we are doing everything we can to make sure that we're keeping everyone as safe as possible. And that our second goal is to make sure that students are staying in the learning mindset. Again, I, we need to take a pause here because this information is coming so quickly. I don't want to miss anything, and I certainly don't want to overcommit to anything. So we need to take a pause, see where we're at with any more changing information before we move forward. I do want to say thank you again for the responses and questions and comments. We will continue the conversation around how we can find new and innovative ways to improve the education we provide to our students in the Granby Public Schools. Any thoughts?
No, I I really agree. There's, there's just far too many variables right now for us to account for. We can't, we can't even sit here and collectively figure out what school is going to look like for anybody next year, right? So I think it's, I think it's a little bit too much to bite off right now. But it also answered, you know, an important question, which was, would there have been any interest had we decided to pursue? Right?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay. East Meadow class size, this, after a lot of thinking, is what I came up with as a placeholder for us to figure out what we need to do over the next year, what we committed to doing within the next year. As far as reconfiguring East Meadow School to get three, 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 three classes per grade. That being said, again, class sizes may actually be more dictated to us by, by state. You know, more than anything else. So I don't, I don't know right now. But this is, this is really just a placeholder item. If anybody thinks it should be labeled something else, feel free to reach out to me or or say something. But for now, that's, that's what that's going to mean, is that's, that's, that's our discussion point for what we need to do to get ready to meet our goal of having this resolved by the end of next year. Right? Does anybody have any questions on that? All right. We're into standing reports. Superintendent report, do you have one? Or did you, did you give one?
I'm really stressed out. I'm just going to say it. We are
Cheryl, your daughter's your report.
Yeah, yeah, there, I, I got popcorn and soda. What can I say? Um, I, uh, I think like everyone, um, we had been waiting for, uh, the announcement from the governor, uh, regarding what, what, what the rest of the year was going to look like. Um, I think we had all been sort of collectively holding our breath. Now that we know, uh, we will move forward, uh, to make sure that all of our students and our staff, as I said, feel comfortable moving forward, with, uh, more, with more detail and more instruction going on in the remote learning environment. Um, which also means wrapping around services to students that we know, um, are having trouble. Uh, so that will be our work for the remainder of the school year in addition to the budget and financing of things. You know, I, I, I do want to say thank you to the administrative team. Um, they have been amazing. Uh, they have been in handing out Chromebooks, um, serving lunches, uh, driving things, uh, to families. I, I can't say enough about the paraprofessionals who, uh, participated in, in those activities too. Um, and just thank you to the staff. This has been, on the one hand, a very incredibly challenging time, uh, for everyone. But on the other hand, as stressful as it is, it's been amazing to see how people come together. Especially in a town like Granby. Um, really the support, uh, for everyone has been amazing and I feel like now we know what we're, what we're, what our end date is for sure. Um, and so if people are feeling isolated, left out, concerned, please reach out. We are here. We're just here in a different venue. And we don't want anyone to feel like they can't support their student in their learning. As I've said in the remote learning plan, this isn't a competition. We're not out on Facebook looking to see who's got the best class agenda or daily agenda for students. Um, we can do this together, uh, and in the fall we'll, we'll reconnect, uh, hopefully and, and be back to business more as usual.
Thank you.
Carol, do we know what this means for our graduation?
I was just going to ask that.
So, uh, actually Stephen had to apologize. He had to put the girls to bed. But he does have, uh, a, a statement regarding graduation. Um, I will put it in your folder for you. Basically, we have been talking about graduation, uh, when the first round of closure, uh, to the school buildings came. We had been working with students and staff, um, and advisors around what, you know, what does it look like? I mean, obviously we've now having to look at the whole of the spring season for our upper class, class friends, uh, proms and senior nights and all of those kinds of things. But specific to graduation, they are going to pull together a work group, um, to make sure that all of our stakeholder voices are heard. And we will be doing something, um, and we will be working with, um, the Board of Health, uh, and also the police and fire, uh, to make sure that we are safe, um, but that we, we do something to celebrate the achievements, um, of our seniors. So stay tuned. Um, my hope is that probably by our May fifth meeting, uh, we will have some updates on the work that's been happening. And, uh, some more details about what to expect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else?
That's it for me.
The next item is the business office and facilities report. I don't know if Adam has anything.
Yeah, so I threw, I didn't throw, I placed in your folders last week, a, uh, year to date comparison. And we like to call it the run rate from last year compared to this year. We're pretty close. Um, and actually I'm sure you guys can guess why we're off at least two percent. And that's for transportation at least through this point. So other than that, um, we are right on schedule. This is through the month of March. So, um, I would suspect the next report, um, and I can provide these, um, at each meeting if you'd like going forward instead of once a month. Um, I since, I would suspect that we'll start seeing some, um, decrease in percentage for this year compared to last year, um, just based on us, um, not being there. Um, but I, I, that's an assumption. I'm not sure. But again, I can provide these reports every meeting, um, throughout the end of the year instead of just once a month, if you guys would, would like it that way.
I, I, I like to see this stuff. I don't know how the rest of you feel. I don't know if we really want to spend a lot of time talking about it, but at least having it in there.
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you.
Yep. And then, um, facilities wise, um, up until today, um, our custodians had been working, um, getting the building, clean, sanitized, um, you know, the, the guidance from the state, um, prior to today. And I'm interested to see how it will change going forward. But prior to today, the guidance was for custodial staff not to be, um, doing any summer project work. Um, it should have been mainly focused on getting buildings, um, cleaned, sanitized and ready for kids to get back to school. Obviously with today's news, we won't be having kids back at school. So, um, I talked to John Sullivan today. Um, our talk was pretty brief, but we, we are going to have the custodians starting to do a lot of the work that they would be doing, um, over the summer. The high school, as we all know, um, needs some attention inside and out. And as unfortunate as this, uh, period is, we do get a few month jumpstart on getting some of those things taken care of inside. So, uh, there'll be a long list that John and I and the, the rest of the Advent team will go over as to what projects we will do in the next coming months. But, um, up until today's news, the directive from the state was custodians should only be performing work that was directly related to cleaning, sanitizing and having the school ready for kids and staff to return. So again, that, that will certainly change. Um, but that's pretty much it on the facility sides of things.
I do have a question about facility stuff and I don't know if it's to you, Adam, or to Cheryl or to who. But I mean, kids have stuff in their desks and in their lockers and things like that. So are we going to have like a day where it's, you know, A to O goes at a certain time or?
So that is something that we have to work with the Board of Health on. What kind of social distancing, um, expectations, uh, we need to have in place for that to happen safely. And what it looks like in terms of, you know, to your point, is it, you know, you know, ten kids at a time, like what, what exactly is that? So part of the conversation for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there was like, one of the options earlier was if your kids had some medication at the school, they could either leave it for a return or pick it up. So, you know, that's like having something in the desk as far as I'm concerned. It's, it's something that you get picked up from the school by, you know, by the family. The, the one thing I wanted to bring up, Adam, um, I know we talked about it real quick last week or last meeting. But what, what is the impact of, um, this going to have on Chartwell's? I, I know we stopped collecting money and I know they're still doing service and I know they're not doing it for free, right? There's going to be a fee in there. And what, what really bothers me is, is they looked so good this year. To, to close it out this way is not fair to them, right?
Yeah. So again, it's, it's one of those, um, continuing question and answer at the state level as to how, um, how that, that's going to look. Cause again, they're, they're working two days a week for, at least for us. I know in East Hampton, um, unless something changed, they were there two or three days a week as well, serving a lot more meals than we were in Granby. So, um, their staff is working in both districts. Obviously they're incurring, um, operational costs. And obviously we're not generating the revenue to offset, um, those costs. So again, it's one of the many topics that's at the state level, um, that really, I don't want to say it doesn't have an answer because I'm, I'm certain they're talking about it. We just don't know what the answer will be. So unfortunately it's a kind of a stay tuned is I have more information. I'll, I'll certainly provide it, um, to the committee. But yeah, I, I understand they were, they were, um, we were doing good work. It started last year. Um, it picked up steam this year with providing half day lunches, bag lunches, you know, some options that we didn't necessarily offer in the past. So yes, it's unfortunate that, that, um, this, this happened o- on many levels, but certainly for them, um, again, uh, there's a lot of unanswered questions, um, and, and this just happens to be one of them. So.
Right. That's, I just want to.
Follow there.
What's that?
There's no blueprint to follow there, right?
Yeah, no. And again, it's, it's, uh, as I've been saying the last few meetings, um, I've been on transportation calls and how do we reimburse transportation vendors that haven't provided services and how do we, how do we reimburse out of district, um, schools that aren't necessarily providing a hundred percent services? Again, the, there's a lot going on at the state level. So it's, it's certainly not, um, it's not criticizing them, but it's the same questions each week and, and the same answers. You know, there's really no headway that's been made and maybe it's because they were, they were building to the decision that they made today. And now maybe that, that decision's made, we will have some more definitive answers going forward. Uh, again, yeah, there's a lot of questions and not that many answers at this point. So.
Right. Um, so is there anything else anybody wanted to bring up here? Cause.
I have a couple of other questions just related to the fact that we know that school is done. Last year and the year before, we had announcements for scholarships. We had people to meetings. And just, you know, I'm just thinking of all these things. My niece is a senior. I'm devastated for her, like, you know, just, and everyone's asking. So I'm just trying to, you know, like.
Can you, can you do me a favor and send me that in an email? I, I want to make sure that we don't miss anything. Um, but now that we know where we're at, I think it, some of us were balancing being hopeful that we would be back with safety. If we were back, then some of these things would naturally occur. We're going to have to change now. If you're looking at the app, um, we're starting to post, uh, where kids are going to school. Where they've been accepted, um, things like that. So we're going to have to adjust, um, the other celebrations that we do, um, for kids as well. So, um, if you can, uh, let Stephen Sullivan, the principal know, also Bill, if it's an elementary school, um, and just CC me on that, then when we meet on a weekly basis at DLT, that's going to become now one of our standing, um, agenda items is how do we now shift into celebrating the end of the school year, uh, for students and families?
Yeah. And then, um, so pass fail, could you just kind of do a run over, um, of that? I feel like there, I've been reading some of the emails and stuff and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So, and I think other people might have questions too. So I know there's pass fail in the traditional sense. And then there's, there was some wording about, um, like how it would affect for, for class ranking and stuff for the, for the older kids. And then there was talk about what it meant for the younger kids. So if you wouldn't mind just kind of an overview of that, that whole.
Sure. So I don't know if my principals are still on. Um, so if I misspeak, they can correct me next week or next school committee meeting. From my perspective, um, pass fail, um, was, uh, was a way for us to determine, uh, student engagement in remote learning, uh, during the, uh, closure of the, of the school buildings. By no means, uh, should any student, um, who had been passing or even close to passing through the first three quarters or the first two trimesters, um, should the last semester, last trimester or last quarter negatively impact them. However, with that being said, um, students that had made great progress in the remote learning environment or during the school closure were highly motivated, very engaged. We wanted to make sure that we had a venue to give them that opportunity to have that positively impact their work and show up. So the idea of pass fail, um, second to what we're hoping to do for kids, um, also is, uh, for Desi, our understanding. And again, this could change with guidance from Desi, but we do have to report for Desi, um, grades, for all of the, uh, days that students are in attendance. So while they have relaxed the attendance requirement, they have not yet relaxed grades. So we moved forward with pass fail as a way to, again, provide students feedback and encouragement to continue to stay engaged, but not negatively impact anything like a class rank, um, or, uh, GPA for the older kids. We also felt quite frankly, that families were looking for a way to communicate to their children that this work mattered. Um, and that they, that they were going to be recognized through feedback and through a pass or fail, um, for engagement in the work. With all of that being said, um, if we worked with families where, um, children were really struggling and were not engaged, but the parents and the families were in contact with us through our student support team, um, that student could earn a pass because they are working with us and we're recognizing through student support that there are significant reasons why a student may not be engaged in the manner, um, and, and producing work, um, like, uh, other peers. So we wanted to recognize and give some flexibility to families, uh, who were working with children who were really struggling in this new environment. So with all that being said, that's sort of where my thinking is at the superintendent level around pass fail, um, with some of the details, uh, for kids, um, at each of the grade levels or in each of the buildings.
Right, right. Thanks.
Okay.
Right. Um, that was all that was on the agenda. I don't know, um, right now I will, I will accept motions to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
So, so all those in favor? All right. All those opposed? Nobody's opposed. Okay. We will reconvene, um,